Good evening. The January 3rd, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District is called to order. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the agenda of Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote?
Director Newman. Director Merschbach.
Aye.
Director Borcherdin.
Aye.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
President Tominski.
Aye.
We've called a special meeting this evening to meet with Hazard, Young, Atiya, and Associates to discuss the Board Superintendent's search interview process. I'll turn the meeting over to Peter Flynn and Kelvin Adams.
Oh, it's on. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. I'm Peter Flynn.
Kelvin Adams, for the first time. Glad to meet all of you.
And we're so happy to continue with you, and we've been here with you since the very beginning, and we know how seriously you take this important endeavor that's going to bring you toward a decision regarding your next superintendent of schools. And this evening Kelvin and I are going to share with you some ideas about interviewing, and we do that with a great deal of respect for you, knowing that you have done a lot of interviews in the course of your lives and sometimes in the course of your careers. So there are some things that you're going to hear tonight that you've heard before, and acknowledge that going in. But it's good that we're all in the same room hearing the same thing, and that's the purpose of what we do. And we encourage you to take issue with anything we say which you feel doesn't go far enough or goes too far in terms of our advice or suggestions. And if we say anything that happens to be an error, we welcome your correction in that regard as well. So but the whole idea of the workshop, again, is to share out loud things that we have, in some cases, practiced before, and other cases, maybe a couple of new things that you haven't heard before, but things that are particularly honing in on the educational environment and the interviewing of a superintendent candidate. So with that, I'll turn it to Kelvin for the next couple of slides.
As Peter's already indicated, we thank you for the opportunity to continue the conversation. For the Board, this is the most important decision you will make. There is no ifs and buts about it. And so part of what we are trying to do tonight is to give you some idea of what the process looks like, especially since you're going to be doing the interview by Zoom, at least with the first set of candidates, and then moving to in-person interviews. So as Peter's already indicated, these are things you already know, and so we're not going to belabor going into the details of it. But being that this is a Zoom interview and you will be doing the interviews from home, the environment that you're in makes a difference. And so it's really important that you are in the environment because it speaks volumes to the candidates that you're interviewing with. Secondly, to check your mic, to make sure that the mic is on. And lastly, to try to make sure that you're having eye contact with the candidate as you're going through the interview. You're going to be spending about an hour and about 45 minutes with all of the candidates, and so it's important that you try your best to make sure that you are having some contact with them, because this is a two-way interview. They're interviewing you, quite frankly, as much as you're interviewing them as you go through this process. So the first day of interviews, obviously, is going to be Friday and Saturday. Friday and then Saturday as a follow-up. And so we want you to try to have your gallery view on so that the candidate can see all of you at the same time. And just some hints as you go through the interview process. We live in a world of Zoom right now, and that's good and bad, depending upon who you talk to. But since this is the first process, we're asking that you look and see the screen and try to make sure that we are trying to be as open as possible and showing them a good impression from your home as you do these interviews. The second one slide is really kind of laying out about an hour and 45 minutes of interviews. About 15 minutes will be the initial part where you are giving the candidates an opportunity to express who they are as you try to ascertain as much information about them as they go through the interview process. We ask that you answer candidly because they'll be asking you questions as well. And lastly, that for you to understand and know that the candidates, quite frankly, have already watched your board meetings. They've already looked at each of you in terms of how the board reacts to each other, how the board approaches themselves. And so they have done their homework. If they're smart persons who are looking to do this work, they have already done their homework in terms of going online and looking at what the process looks like. The third one, as Peter said, we don't want to belabor this because you've done a lot of this already. Identify actual questions in closed sessions. We will go over the questions with you in closed session. All of the questions, quite frankly, with the exception of one or two, have come from you. Peter asks you to provide feedback in terms of what kind of questions you want to ask, and those questions are the questions that will be made up, will be the bulk of the questions that are part of the interview. The same questions, we ask that you ask each candidate the same question and not deviate from that. It's a level of consistency. Any kind of hypothetical questions, what-if questions or follow-up questions that you could have to the candidate if they give an answer to something. What-if might be some ways that you try to ascertain more information from them. Lastly, the questions that we have received from you are questions germane to what is best for Cedar Rapids, not any other district. And so part of what you are doing is kind of zeroing in on qualities based upon the profiles that you came up with and the community came up with that aligned to Cedar Rapids School District. And so that's a really important piece. So you're not interviewing for some other job or some other superintendency. You're interviewing for this particular school district based on a profile that you came up with and based on the questions. Last slide for me is there are some questions that we ask that you stay away from as you go through the interview process. And I'm going to read these because I think they're important. The ancestry or nationality of race, religion, the marital status, living arrangements of children, financial, credit ratings, debts, types of discharge from military or branch services, age, sexual preferences, arrests, politics or political preferences, health, disability. Some of these things are going to come up as a natural part of the interview process, as candidates talk about their experiences, as you look at the resumes and all of those kinds of things. What we ask, that you not ask these kind of questions in the interview process. All of you have done interviews before, and you know there's some hot-button questions that should not be asked in an interview for a number of different reasons. Obviously, most of those reasons are legal, but you don't want to go down that road. And again, I would suspect that all of the candidates are going to divulge all of these things through the interview process as a natural part of the process. I think I'll turn it over to Peter at this time.
Could I ask for some clarification?
Sure.
Can we do that? So when referring to arrests, I'm just assuming that any of that would be, of course, you're doing background checks on candidates.
Yes, ma'am.
So anything like that would already be exclusionary.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
I just, that is what I thought I just wanted to clarify.
Yes. You're going to get a whole profile of everything about the candidates, and so you have all of that information. So that's why we say it's best not to ask those kind of questions, because you have all of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other on that list? Because that's quite a comprehensive list to say, well, what's left? But are there any questions about any of that?
So just to be clear, if they bring up any of the topics on this list, can we engage in that conversation? Can we ask any questions as follow-up questions? Or do we just listen and?
Well, you ask follow-up.
Yeah.
If they bring it up, we can.
The best way to go about it is to be reflective with them.
Okay. Okay.
Have you ever been in that spot before where you had to be reflective, called active listening, and you essentially say back to them what they've said to you? Do you agree? Everybody had that and had to do that off of the way you did it?
Well, just like, just for an example, with the arrest thing, like, you know, if they say, you know, I got arrested for, I don't know, DUI, something like that.
So talk a little bit more about that.
So. Right, you know, and I, or like, what could have been an alternative choice there? Do you do that or no?
Yeah. And that would be very unusual if somebody brought that up in an interview.
I agree.
Yeah. But if somebody said that maybe in an informal setting, which you're going to have in the second round, and so if you're in, and that happens to come up, again, I would treat it very carefully and not pursue it a whole lot. And say back, oh, so you got a DUI? And if they want to tell you more, they'll tell you more, but you're not asking them to tell you more.
Gotcha.
You're just reflecting. Again, right? Okay. So you, and I'm sure you'll find them, if they bring up one of these subjects, I'm sure you'll find them to be as talkative as they want to be. And then if you have any questions after the interview that you want us to pursue, we'll find that out on your behalf and share it with everybody if we legally can do that. And we have had some conversations about what's in social media and that kind of stuff. So that's part of our routine to ask those questions because we're not bound by the same kind of laws as you are. Okay? So. So the whole idea of this slide, did I skip one here? Yeah. Listening to what is said. So the difference between what is being said and how it's being said. So obviously, you listen for the content, and you want to hear what they're saying so that you can assess the veracity of the content that they're sharing with you. And then the second part is called how they're sharing it. Is it a humdrum presentation of something, or is it something with a little bit of passion? And be making note of that as you're going along. And it's important to characterize both what is said and how it's being said. That's good information for you to look back on. And because sometimes, you know, if you do that as you go, it's easier to look back at that note you made and say, oh, I remember how passionate the individual was when speaking about this matter. And then as Kelvin talked about asking what-if questions, so how good are people at thinking on their feet? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I could have done that. Thank you. How good are they at thinking on their feet? And do they seem to be caught off guard with any subject or any question? And so make notes as well of that kind of thing as you're going along. And then this next one is a little more difficult because you're here to see whether or not they can, how good are they at solving problems? Can they at least outline how they'd go about solving a problem? Can they at least talk about the parts of a problem in a way that makes sense? So the comfort level is not just in the ability to put words together, but rather it's about the use of a language that's not filled with jargon and educationese and that kind of thing, that they can speak clearly to you without relying on educational language. And so you're looking for the clarity of their language in this part, too. And then also try to look at whether or not their voice is a strong voice that would work well in a crowd or work well with a group of people. And the eye contact thing that we list here is a little tricky. It took me a while to figure out how to give the illusion that you're making eye contact. And when you do that on a Zoom, I think you look where the camera is. And it comes across as, oh, he's looking at me, as opposed to looking around the screen. Now, looking around the screen is another thing. It is sensing where you are. Because as Kelvin said, if we have a gallery look, if I'm the interviewee and I have a gallery look, I'm going to occasionally check out the other people in the gallery and see if they're paying attention to what I'm saying, if they seem to be engaged with me. It's really hard to do, I think, on Zoom, to engage people. And but some people are better at it than others. So that's kind of what's up here. Two other things. One is hearing more we statements than I statements. Is it a team effort or is it a one-person show? And then finally, is there an indication that the person that you're interviewing has done research on the district, has done their homework? That's kind of important to figure out. And that will become apparent, I think, as you go through the interview. So the next one is looking for the fit. And the last one was a little bit about comfort. And looking for the fit is not as easy because you're not only thinking of the present, but you're thinking of the future. Where is the district going? And can you see this person in the middle of where you think the district is going to be, say, four or five years from now? And also, where are they going to be on that journey? And are they going to fit in with the district? So the fit is really an important thing to be looking at. Do you have a thought on this that you want to share? Anybody? Okay. So that whole thing about establishing positive relationships, I think, is important, too. And that's where that came through loud and clear in developing the profile. And that's something that you want to try to sense, whether or not the person might be a relationship person in fact. All of them believe they are, but sometimes that's easy to demonstrate, and sometimes it's not so easy to demonstrate. But of course, they've got to appeal to a broad range of people, right? Not only the staff, but also the stakeholders in the community. Okay. This is going to be one of the hardest things. We're going to ask you not to rate the candidates until you've heard them all. It's going to be hard to do. We're asking you to do that for a couple of reasons. One is that somebody else might have heard some things that you didn't hear. And so when we do the debrief, you're going to have an opportunity to hear what other people heard. And they might say something that reminded you that, yes, you did hear that, but you had forgotten that you heard that. So that's a good reason to listen to the group feedback on the interviews so that you can benefit from that, and you can hear from your other board members what they heard. So we're asking that that's part of the information that will help you rank. And then we'll have a process. I'll talk a little bit more about that as we go along, but we'll have a process for you that will assist you in ranking them, if that's what you want to do. And but we'll go through that process later, actually during the debriefing. So then the timeliness from the first round to the second. On Saturday, we expect to allow a great deal of time and be patient with you in terms of, we're not going to rush through that process because it's really important in going from the first group to the second group, to deciding on who is going to come back. And we have a process that allows you to do that without actually voting in closed session. It's just a good process for, and I think you'll enjoy it, for determining who ought to come in the second round. And then following that, it will be good if there are any things that you feel are not easily available on your website that we make available through the staff, we make available to the people that you're going to invite back for the second round. Okay. And then the second round interview is, and by the way, the same rules apply. There they are again. You can't ask these things. And as I mentioned earlier, when you get into some of the informal settings, like the luncheon and the tour and those kinds of things, and it becomes a little easier to slip into, well, it's just a casual conversation, but you still have to be a little bit on your guard in terms of not bringing up and not asking questions in those areas. So it's less formal, but the rules still apply. The, there might be a question or two that didn't get asked in the first round. Good to ask them in the second round, and you'll decide that. You'll decide what questions will be asked in the second round as well. We'll make some suggestions. We'll make some suggestions by the debrief. And when you do the debrief, you'll say, well, I'd like to find out more about this particular area. And there might be some general questions that you'll ask all the people you bring back, and then you might have some that are individualized. And so we'll talk more about that. And you'll get to look more closely at their views and their practices and their style, and all these other things, their competencies and their accomplishments. And again, always with the profile as being the context. And then we'll prepare, as I said, we'll prepare that outline for you based upon the debriefing. And you'll have plenty of time to look at that outline and decide whether or not that's really how you want to spend that time in the second round. Okay. How are we doing? All right. Then let's go to, okay, so the exit interview is basically to check in with the second-round people with, usually with the president and vice president. It could be the next morning. You might decide for one reason or another to do it after everything's done, the night of the interview. It's usually done in, again, a setting where you can have a cup of coffee if that's appropriate, but it usually doesn't last more than a half hour, 45 minutes. You essentially just want to say, do you have any further questions? You still interested? And if so, then talk about what kinds of things should be in place in order for the person to come and be your next superintendent. And we'll give you an outline, an agenda to follow for that. And we'll also give the applicant an outline to fill and complete and bring with them to the exit interview.
I have a question about the process there.
Yes.
Is there an opportunity between the second-round interview and the second-round exit interview for the Board to meet as a body to kind of discuss the second interview? It looks like there's an opportunity after the first interview for the Board to kind of, is there that opportunity between the second-round interview and the exit interview, or is that dependent on each board member to communicate their thoughts to the board leadership? Or how does that work?
Well, yeah, the exit interview is not a decision-making thing. It's just a matter of gathering more information. The board president and vice president are asking some questions and answering some questions, and then determining whether or not there's continued interest. And then they bring that back in the debrief of the second round, which will happen at noon on Friday, the 20th.
I see.
Yeah.
So there's no opportunity for the Board to meet in between, but I'm assuming there's an opportunity for questions to be elevated from board members to board leadership and say, hey, I'd really like a little more about that.
Nobody's ever asked that question before, but now we think we want to customize that. There's no reason why, there's no reason why you couldn't come together following the second-round interview, and the applicant leaves, and you want the president and vice president to pursue something prior to the conclusion of the exit interview.
Sure. I don't know if meeting is necessary, but I just am wondering if there's structure in there, like, that we would then elevate additional questions or something, that we would want additional information for the vice president and the president to discuss.
That opportunity is certainly there. And maybe that's a reason to not do the exit interview right after the evening and wait until the next morning. So then each board member would have that opportunity. I hadn't thought of that before, but I could see where that might happen, and you might want to pursue something and ask another question and gather some more information. So.
I'm not trying to reinvent the wheel. I was just asking if like, this process exists.
No, it's just.
Or should we try to get some clarity around that?
It's a good question, and I don't know. What does the rest of the board feel about that?
Let me just get clarity about this part. So once the second round is over.
Yeah.
And the president and the vice president meets with the.
Applicant.
Applicant. Then the president and vice president makes the decision to keep the applicant or?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
No. So the same process happens for all, let's say you bring back three people, which is highly recommended. So you bring back three people, and you go through your interview with that person. And then, following the interview, there's an opportunity for the president and vice president to answer any more questions that they might have. And it's also an opportunity for them to let the president and vice president know that they are continuing in their interest in the position. And thirdly, what they would expect in terms of an agreement to come.
And then you all share that with us.
Then the board president and vice president share that with you during the debriefing, which will occur beginning at noon on Friday, the 20th. Yeah.
I would be in favor of doing that exit interview the following morning.
Right. Right.
So that gives the candidate time to think about additional questions. It gives all of us time. And if there are things that need to be clarified, that can be communicated to the president or the vice president for follow-up.
Thank you.
Am I saying the wrong day? I thought it was Friday.
It is Friday. It's Friday.
Friday, the 20th.
Yep.
The 20th?
Yes. You should have it on your calendars.
I think we're done. Unless you have some additional questions or concerns or another good idea like that last one. Because like I said, we've done a lot of searches and nobody's ever suggested, but I like that idea of having that opportunity. Did you check this out and see if you can get more information about this? It's an excellent idea.
I have a couple of questions. First, you advised us not to do any ranking of the candidates until we've talked to all of them. Will there, however, be some sort of rubric for us to write, to take notes in? Or would we take those notes in our scripts? And?
Yes, to the last part, we haven't developed a rubric, but we could develop a rubric and if that was something that you'd like to use, like a four-point rubric, would that be?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay? We could do that and we could take, we can do that.
Okay. I think that would be helpful.
You want to use in the first round?
Yes.
For the second round?
Yeah.
Are you saying first and?
I'd say first and second, but.
And you can use the same rubric because it's going to go back to, yeah, it's going to go back to the profile, but we'll structure it for you according to the way the interview script is structured.
Okay. Yeah, that would be helpful, I think, for, at least for me. My other question is, you mentioned that the candidates will be likely having questions of us.
Yeah.
Who answers those questions from our perspective? Does the board president speak for us? Do we all speak individually? Do you have a recommendation on that?
I would like to engage.
Pardon?
I would like the opportunity to engage.
I mean, that's up to you. I mean, you, and you know, if you run over a little bit, that's okay. There really is a lot of flexibility in terms of your time, the way the schedule is set up. If you run over, you can make up the time or you can, yeah. So don't worry about that. And if you want to each have an opportunity, you know, we'll be cheering. So it's really up to you to, you know, see if any other board members want to respond to something that you initially respond to, or maybe you'll ask somebody else to respond. Is that okay?
Based on the question, board engagement, I think, is obviously something that we're striving for. So I don't see why we wouldn't. Acknowledging the fact that there is like time, like, I mean, there's, you know, we can go over, but there is a, in most cases, an interview that's happening 15 to 20 minutes later.
Yeah.
So we just need to be aware of that.
Yeah. And there's going to be an opportunity at the very beginning for you to introduce yourselves too as well. And so, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Good to have engagement. Good questions. Thank you.
Any additional questions from board members? Thank you for taking the time. I think this is a really useful workshop. I know I've never been through a superintendent search before, certainly for sitting in this seat, so I think this is valuable for all of us. So thank you. The last thing on our agenda is a motion for a closed session. Do we have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed session on Tuesday, January 3, 2023 to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, that the individual requests a closed session as provided in Section 21.5 LI of, oop, 21.51I of the Iowa Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Garlock.
Aye.
Director Brown Terry.
Aye.
Director Borchardine.
Aye.
Director Merschbruck.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Smitsky.
Aye. The board will reconvene in closed session at this time with no further business. We stand adjourned.